could benefit Emeryville without straining public health and safety resources. In order to create the Health Exchange, we asked the City Council to reconsider its current ban. We believe we can build a safe, sustainable model for community service and development. Chriselle and I would like an opportunity to discuss this and present our business model to you at the next Safety Commission meeting on January 5th, 2012, or sooner, if you'd like. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you.
If there are no questions.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor Davis, members of the council. My name is Brian Carver. I live in the Triangle area. I wanted to let you know about something my family saw this weekend. As we were driving up to the Anna Yates School, we saw one of the Emeryville Police Cruisers parked there. I was curious what was going on. As you might know, the play yard is open on the weekends. And I looked over and saw maybe a dozen kids, fairly young, playing football. And then also saw some of Emeryville's police officers over there as well. And they appeared to be talking to the kids. And even eventually, we saw them tossing the ball around with them. And I hope I'm not getting anybody in trouble with Chief James. But I don't know whether this is an established program where the police work with the kids in the community, or whether they were just on patrol and saw some kids and decided to go talk to them and get to know people in the community. But I just thought it was fantastic, right? I mean, that's exactly the sort of thing that builds community, where when our police know the names of the kids that live in the community, the kids get where they trust police officers, think of them as role models, right? And people that they can trust. That's just fabulous. And so I just, you know, came across this driving through the city and wanted you guys to know about it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Any other citizens to be heard? Andre.
Mayor, you also have one that we handed to you that you need to call in.
Okay. All right. Hi, my name is Joe Cohen. I live in Emeryville. I've been here 20 years. I live on Christie Avenue. I'd like to offer a few observations about this moment in history and make a modest proposal regarding our own community. It seems the whole world has been having a sort of nervous breakdown from which it's staggering, hopefully, toward recovery. The breakdown's about a lot of things under the current aegis of Occupy. Things we're occupying our minds with, such as, do the citizens of this world really want to continue with tyrannical rulers, more interested in personal power than the well-being of their people? Do we really want to allow financial institutions to bamboozle people so that they lose their homes, their jobs, their savings, their pensions, even after bailing those institutions out from their depredations? Do we really want to allow powerful corporate organizations to buy our politicians and put them in their pockets so that their ability to think clearly about the welfare of their constituents is compromised beyond recall? Do we really want the cost of educating our young to be so onerous that they are bonded in debt to those institutions we bailed out for many years after they leave college? These are matters that Occupy is occupied with. And so I suggest that the City Council issue a proclamation in support of the Occupy movement as a gesture to our friends and neighbors in Emeryville who've been swindled and harmed by the banality of a corrupted financial system. That's what I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I would like to ditto that. I think what Mr. Cohen suggested is something that we should seriously consider doing.
Andre.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to address the issue of marijuana. I'm not for or against, or I'm not a chemist, but I know there is some chemical compound in which the effects on the brain are basically unknown. People just take a risk. And any addiction is a symptom of a chemical reaction. There's been many studies on that, and this is not new. And the reason there is law against it is not for fun, it's for to protect the health for the people. And those who have, for instance, fibrocele necrosis when they smoke marijuana, it aggravates. And if you want to talk to about that, I could give you the name of a doctor at Kaiser who did extensive research about it. Please don't be fooled with the new generation of getting stoned. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
Mr. Trunks.
Hello. I was, I didn't anticipate to speak now at this time. However, for what is on, I think it's on item A, funding for Fund 101, which is reserve funding, since that has been brought up under the last few meetings or the last meeting, with that reserve amount of funds, because of the pollution in the area, especially in the water, I was wondering if it was possible for the Emeryville City Council to use that money for a better means and possibly do something about the amount of E. coli and lethos parasis in the water and the marina drinking water everywhere throughout the bay and even the county. I've mentioned this matter before. Bleach compound that's kind of more effective because of the amount of chlorine available and the amount of phosphorus in it is 70% chlorine, sodium and phosphorus, 30% water would help a great deal. It would nearly destroy pretty much everything that would be impurity or contaminant in drinking water that we had at risk for people to drink. It takes about, well, not about $13.20, $13.20 to make one ounce of it. It's not a complicated process, simply sodium chloride, phosphorus, and water. The amount of actual chlorine instead of, let's say, Clorox bleach or just normal generic bleach is 87% instead of 5, 10, or however much would be in store-bought bleach. And with that in mind, I was just hoping that would be something Emeryville would consider, or perhaps someone here from Oakland or Berkeley or who are maybe attending may consider that a better use of funds. I'd like to give a copy of this to the mayor and to Mr. O'Keefe.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Joe.
We'll move along to, thank you, Tom. We'll move along to item 3A, Special Orders of the Day. This is leaving office remarks by Councilmember Ken Bukowski.
Well, that's a short way to start. After 24 years, it's been a long time. Certainly worked on a lot of issues, learned a lot of things, and I intend to remain fully active and involved. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to serve you.
I'd entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So move.
Second.
Without exception, the consent calendar is approved. And we'll move into administrative items. This is the installation of elected officials, administration of the oath of office to the three newly-elected City Council members. Karen Hemphill.
Yes. Give me one second.
We still have to vote on something, right? Certifying the results, right?
Yeah, probably.
Excuse me, Mayor, don't just certify the results first before you do the swearing-in.
That's what the consent calendar did.
Oh, okay.
So if Jack Asher would come up to the dais, please?
Okay. So we need you to take your state oath of office. I have before you the three new council members, Ruth Atkins, Jack Asher, and Nora Davis, your oath in front of you. So if you will rise, and rather than repeating after me, if you can just read aloud and where the blank is, put your name, then you will be sworn in. So can start. I?
I.
I. Ruth Atkins. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
So this is subscribed, sworn to me, this day, the sixth day of December 2011. Congratulations. And if you'll sign those and pass them to me, I'll keep those in our file. Councilmember Asher.
We're going to take this opportunity to hear from the newly-elected council members, and we'll start out with Jack Asher, our very newest member.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, and thank you to the members of the City Council. I'm both thrilled and humbled to be serving on Emeryville City Council. And I'm grateful to the many voters and stakeholders in our city who supported my candidacy. And I'm looking forward to working on the issues that defined my campaign and really resonated with our community. So as we move forward, I hope to improve communications between City Hall and our residents and to actively support better, more family-friendly housing in the city of Emeryville. I also want to work to improve bike and pedestrian access in addition to focusing upon the quality services that all of our residents, from youth to seniors, depend upon. I look forward to working with my City Council member, my fellow City Council members on these and other efforts, and I look forward to working with Emeryville's residents and businesses to achieve these goals. My presence here tonight is a testament to the hard work of the many volunteers, friends, both new and old, and residents that supported me over the past several months. So thank you for hosting parties, coordinating volunteers, walking with me, delivering signs, contributing funds, phone banking, and ultimately getting out the vote. Your support made the difference. The Steering Committee for Rule has been supportive of me for over two years now. And for this campaign, they coordinated the many hours of walking and phone banking and more that helped me to meet and talk with residents of our city. We're a small town, and our residents expect to personally interact with their council members. This, for me, was the most rewarding part of the campaign. So to the residents, please know that I will continue to appreciate and count on your input as a new council member. The campaign also allowed me to meet a variety of stakeholders in Emeryville, from the small business owners to members of the Chamber of Commerce, labor representatives, and our city staff. To all of these groups, I look forward to our shared goal of making Emeryville even better, and I appreciate your deep commitment to our city. I want to thank the other candidates for their hard work and participation in our public forums during the campaign. I want to thank Mayor Davis and Ruth Atkins and former councilmember Bukowski for the years of service that they have given prior to this November. And thank you to Jennifer West and Kurt Brinkman for their support and advice through this process. Finally, I'd like to say thank you to my family, Brian, Cora, and Freel, for their support and patience over the past few months. My family's collective interest and joy in our friends, neighbors, and programs in the city is an important part of our daily lives, and I want my service to our community to reflect our family's pride in the fact that we live in the city of Emeryville. I look forward to serving you and to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight to see this unique event, which happens once every four years. I'll keep my comments brief, which is that it really is, what?
Two years. Every two years.
Every two years, right, right.
Time flies.
Time flies when you're having fun. Public service is truly an honor and a privilege, and I don't mean that in a corny way, but it really has been a privilege to serve this community for 12 years. I look forward to another four. I think there's been a lot of work and growth that has done to make, that has been done and that will continue to be done to make this a stronger community that knits all of the elements together. And community building is kind of my leitmotif, and making the decisions that benefit the common good and the common welfare are values that have always guided my decisions. So with that, I'm looking forward to what I know will be a fiscally challenging time, but one where I think can bring all the elements of the community closer together. And thank you for your confidence in me for allowing me to serve another term.
I want to thank everyone who's come tonight and everyone who participated in the election. It's very important for this city to have people working together to make sure that we are on track and moving toward the city that we want to enjoy a quality of life in. I'm very pleased that you've given me another four years. It's, as Ruth has mentioned, we are facing some real fiscal challenges. Our residents know that, our business community knows that. The state of California is almost in freefall, and we have got to really buckle down, all of us working together, to maintain what we have and to improve the quality of life that we have. Again, thank you, and we'll continue on with the meeting.
Before we go on, can I just, once again, thank Ken for his 24 years and his vision? That was started, really, 24 years and all the changes in Emeryville. I really appreciate all your work that you've done through the past 24 years, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Can I also want to make a comment, which is that when I first was elected to the council, you spent a lot of time talking to me and kind of filling me in. And I want to acknowledge the fact that you were very generous of your time, gave me your input and your thinking, and it helped what is a very steep learning curve. When you're a common resident, you don't, have no idea the kinds of decisions you're going to be faced with. And I want to appreciate your generosity in those early days, and I also want to appreciate that you were a teacher for me around the Bay Bridge. And for those of you who don't know about Ken, he was an advocate for not building a new eastern span, but for retrofitting the existing one because the original bridge was, could take the load for rail. And if we're going to be moving to a more multimodal environment and trying to get people out of cars, retrofitting the bridge would have kept that option alive. The new design doesn't, can't take the load and isn't designed to take rail. So as you are aware, when people buy, on the long-haul train from Chicago to San Francisco, they buy a ticket that says San Francisco, they get out here, and then they take a bus over the bridge. And so you were visionary about that, and I do want to acknowledge you for your advocacy on that, on that point.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 5B, and I would like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer West as mayor and Kurt Brinkman as vice mayor.
Second that.
Without exception, Mayor West. Let's change it.
I want to thank Mayor Davis for having served as mayor this past year under difficult times.
you do so and put your name in. And just, but to say, for you, Mayor West, I, Mayor Jennifer West, and for you, Vice Mayor Kurt Brinkman, to say, I, Vice Mayor Kurt Brinkman. So I?
I, Mayor Jennifer West, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Subscribed and sworn to me, this sixth day of December 2011. Congratulations and best wishes, Mayor West and Vice Mayor Brinkman.
We are on item 5D. This is a consideration of resident petitions for the establishment of a city annual meeting. How should we handle this? Great. So former councilmember Bukowski will...
I would like to ask you to hold this over for a couple of meetings because I'd like to get together with the staff and prepare a more thorough report about how this would be carried out and what the suggestions are.
Is that all right with the council?
Fine by me.
That's fine. Thank you. So with that, I will adjourn the special meeting of the Emeryville City Council that we had this evening. It is adjourned. Karen, you'll let me know when you're ready?
Yes.
You're ready? Okay. We are going to move directly into the Community Development Commission meeting agenda, and I call that to order. I suppose now is the time to do the roll call. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any help I can get from staff in making sure I run the meeting smoothly is much appreciated. I'm not proud.
Everybody have practice.
I have had a little practice, but still.
Okay. Commissioner Asher?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brinkman?
Here.
And Mayor, oh, sorry, and Vice Chair Brinkman?
Here.
And Chair West. I might need some help myself.
Here. That's all right. If you would rise, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't see any Special Orders of the Day, but if there are any public comments for this, items on the consent calendar or not on this agenda, please.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor West and councilmembers. Bob Cantor, President and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. First of all, let me say, on behalf of our Board of Directors and all of our business members, congratulations to our re-elected councilmembers, Ruth and Nora Davis, and of course, our newly-addicted councilmember, Jack Asher. We were very pleased to support your candidacies, and we're delighted that you, Brian, we're looking forward to working with you. And what we all agree, and I'll say it again, I hate hearing this, will be a very challenging year economically, even more of a reason for our business community and our city government to partner to keep our city a little ahead of the curve. As I talk to my colleagues throughout the western United States, chamber executives, over 700 of us in a room, and they keep asking me what we're doing right in this town, and I'm not sure I can give them all the magic answers, but we still generate buzz in this city of how we're staying a little bit ahead of the curve vis-à-vis some of our other communities. Apropos to which, I wanted to let everybody know of an event that occurred just this morning at ADM, right here in the very council chambers. We helped to broker a workshop with the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory on how to do business with the lab. You may, maybe you don't know that the lab's procurement office is physically in Emeryville. They moved it here earlier this year. It's located in the same building where Leapfrog is on Hollis Street. And just to clarify, this has nothing to do with the hopefully prospective location of the lab's second campus. This exists right now. I was contacted by the procurement office of the lab, said they would like to put on a workshop to help, reach out to small businesses especially, although the event was open to everyone. We arranged that meeting. I want to thanks, before I forget, I don't know if she's here tonight, Michelle DeGuzman, on your city staff, who helped us put this on, and she is wonderful. What a wonderful employee she is at the city. We had over 35 businesses here, not just from Emeryville. The event was open to the public, anybody could come, and it was very well-received. Ms. Han Lei, who's the Small Business Liaison Officer for the lab, put on the event. And after she was finished, and she stood right here where I'm standing now, she had a line of people here for almost 40 minutes asking for additional information. Nora Davis was here and was, actually, didn't get to speak, but she was here and saw some of it. Just one more way, we're trying to build business relationships or a business community. Nothing's a silver bullet, there's never one thing that's going to solve all the problems. But, and just to let you know finally, and I'll stay within my time, we do stuff like this a lot. Some people may not know what the Chamber of Commerce does, and I'm not going to give you the lecture, but we broker meetings like this all the time. That's our job, and we do many other things as well. But it's one more way that we try to help our businesses. And Ms. Han Lei, who was wonderful, we're going to continue to explore other ways that we can hopefully broker more relationships like this. One last thing, we want to invite everybody to our annual Chamber Holiday Party, which is next Thursday, the 15th, that's a week from tomorrow, at the Courtyard by Marriott. Thanks, and congratulations again to our new members.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our two items on the consent calendar, and I would entertain a motion.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Without objection. That passes. And are there any communications and reports on this agenda this evening? No? Okay.
Mayor West, if I could ask Charlie Bryant to just briefly inform the group about this meeting tomorrow about the proposed contest on Sherwin-Williams plans.
Sure. There, the PG&E is sponsoring what they call a zero-net-energy design competition. It's to design and...
Mayor West, if I could ask Charlie Bryant to just briefly inform the group about this meeting tomorrow about the proposed contest on Sherwin-Williams plans.
Sure. The PG&E is sponsoring what they call a zero net energy design competition. It's to design an energy-efficient mixed-use development project. It's all hypothetical, but they have selected the Sherwin-Williams site, the former paint factory site here in Emeryville. This is being actually coordinated by a former intern in the Economic Development and Housing Department, Noel Cole, and we've provided a lot of information to them, and Sherwin-Williams has also been participating. This design competition has been ongoing for the last several months, and the winners are going to be announced, or the winner is going to be announced tomorrow morning at a press conference at the AIA office in San Francisco. It's at 10:00 a.m., and the AIA office is located at 130 Sutter Street, Suite 600 in San Francisco.
And we're going.
And we're going.
I have a question.
Great, thank you.
Charlie, I have another question for you. Novartis tore down a building, and in the process kind of closed off 53rd Street, so I'm wondering what the schedule is for getting 53rd reopened.
I would defer to the Public Works Director for that.
There's actually quite a bit of work still that needs to be done. There's more of the building that's still coming down, and then there's a large footing under the sidewalk in the public right of way that they need to remove, and there are utilities in the way, so they're working on that. I would estimate within the next couple of months that the street should be open again, but I'm going to try to push to have it open as soon as it's safe.
Thank you. If there are no further communications or reports, then we will adjourn that meeting and move right on to open the Emeryville City Council meeting this evening. Again, I would entertain any public comments of items that are either on the consent calendar or not on this agenda. And seeing none right now, I will turn to the city manager for a report.
So I just have a quick reminder tonight for the council and also the community that we have another workshop scheduled for the design of the Center for Community Life. This, I think, is the fifth in a series of workshops that have been conducted by the district in order to allow the community to have input into the design. For those who haven't been before, it's a good opportunity to check in and give some input. For those who have been before, the design has evolved each time it's gone through one of these workshops, so it's worthwhile, even if you've been, to come back and see where the design is. So that'll be next Tuesday on December 13th at 5:30, and it'll be right here in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is the consent calendar.
I want to pull F.
Okay.
I'd like to pull H and I, and I'd move the rest of the consent calendar.
I'd second that.
Anything else that needs to be pulled? All right. Without exception, the rest of the consent calendar passes, and Ruth, if you'd like to talk about G.
Okay, so item F-
Sorry.
Yeah, item F pertains to getting people, private firms or individuals, deputized to be city inspectors after an emergency so that if a building needs to be red-tagged or can get the green lights to be reoccupied or whatever, that it would expedite that process. And my question is, and it wasn't clear from all the material, whether the deputization as a city inspector goes to a qualified individual or to a firm?
I believe it could be either. It's, whoever they are, they have to be qualified, but they're selected by, initially, we're talking about Novartis, Wareham, and PG&E, and the individual or firm would have to be contracted with those firms, and they would have to meet certain minimum requirements and fill out all the necessary forms and so forth, and then we would approve it, but I believe it could be either an individual or a firm.
So I noticed also this deputization might go for different kinds of professional backgrounds, like an elevator person, or the, what they call life support-
Life safety system.
Life safety systems for the ventilation, and then the structural engineer. So are there any other disciplines that need to be included in this?
Well, the program would address specific buildings of each of these firms. So on the Novartis campus, for example, there would be, each building would be identified and included, and there would be a checklist for each building of what exactly needs to be looked at after an earthquake, and it would be based on the building, the characteristics of each building, what the disciplines would be that would be needed on the team that would be certified by the city to be deputized by us. If a building or a complex didn't have any elevators, obviously you don't need someone who's an elevator expert, but it would be based on the characteristics of the buildings that would be included.
Well, I guess my preference would be that the deputization not go to a firm, but go to individuals only, because then we can check directly their license, appropriate licenses, and not have to rely on someone, some company's HR or something like that.
But you could have a general contractor that has multiple disciplines and is licensed to look at more than one thing.
Say something.
So in a case like a Novartis, they have a lot of very specific processes there, so they would probably look at a firm that has the whole bailiwick of expertise.
Okay, well, then I would like the employees, not the firm, to be deputized.
Excuse me, Mayor. It would be the individuals, it would not be the firm that are the ones that are actually deputized, because they are the ones that will have, that will have to show that they have the requisite requirements, and there are provisions that we are looking for structural engineers as well as architects, persons who have specialties in inspections of elevators, and also life safety systems. So there's a host of different sort of subspecialties that individuals and not just the firm will be identified in advance. Now, obviously, if those individuals leave the firm that is really being contracted with by, say, Novartis, then another individual will need to be identified, and likewise, they will have to have the requisite qualifications. So it really isn't an individual person that will be identified.
But that's going to be a challenge, because like in my case, I carry the license for my company, and I have 30 people that could do certain aspects of any job using my license.
Well, we're not particularly after, I mean, the main things are, you know, that the individual is primarily, it's a structural engineer is the main person. Now, you may not be a structural engineer, but you might have somebody in your company that is a licensed structural engineer.
And he would be able to see all those drawings with his signature and his state license on them, yes.
Right.
Mayor West.
Yeah.
I'd like to commend staff on bringing this forward, because this is really an emergency recovery tactic to use that will serve us very well, and we're working on our emergency preparation, but we have to think about what happens after the emergency happens. I would move this resolution. I think it's a prudent act on the part of the city, and I would move the resolution.
There is no resolution at this time. We would come back at a subsequent meeting with a resolution for the council's consideration, but this was just a report about the program to get your direction to allow us to go forward with it.
Well, I would ask the council to support moving forward on this.
I support it if it rests with the individual.
It sounds like those details will be something we can discuss further as the program is developed. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, then, without exception?
A second?
Yep.
Second.
Oh, second? And we'll move on that item. Thank you. Next, Councilmember Davis.
On item H, I just want to make a comment. We've all heard about the destruction of the two pop-up skate parks under Caltrans property, and we've worked diligently with these skateboarding people to find a place within the square mile, and Public Works has come up with what I consider to be a brilliant idea that will not cost us any money. Is that correct, Maurice, if we can get this from the park bond?
If it works out that way, that we can get the funds, I think it'll be that way, yes.
Okay, and this would make certain segments of the Joseph Emory Linear Park, a skate park. I would move this resolution. I think it's a brilliant solution.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I have a comment about it. I actually have a location that I'd like to see, that I would prefer as a skate park. We don't need to get into that discussion tonight, but my question is, when does the money have to either be encumbered or spent by, under the terms of this bond?
I believe when the bond was approved, we had 10 years to spend the money.
But starting when?
From, I think it was two years ago. Melinda may know a little bit more about that.
Okay.
I believe it was two years ago.
So I guess I just want to say that in terms of building recreational amenities in the public realm, we have people who play basketball at the half-court, because we don't even have a public full-court basketball court. We don't have any public tennis courts, and now we're trying to jam a little skate spot into a linear park that doesn't even meet the qualifications for a full skateboard park. And do we really want to do this, or, and then feel like we've accomplished a park when we've only accomplished a spot? So that's my comment, because I do think there's places in town where we could have a full-fledged skateboard park.
I have a comment, too.
Yeah, please.
I have the same concerns that Councilmember Atkins does as far as the space goes and what kind of features we'll actually be able to offer, and because in addition, I'm hoping that along with accommodating skateboarders, we're also thinking about other things like scooters, which are really popular right now, and I'm not certain that that's enough space. And then another concern I have is, have we talked to the businesses in the promenade about this at all? I don't know how they feel about the park as it currently stands, what kind of usage it's getting, and I'd just like to see them informed about it.
If I can come up, I have a few things to show you.
Yeah.
Just happened to have it.
How convenient.
So I put a lot of thought into these same issues myself. The linear park as it is right now gets used by some of the cyclists that go through there, but I think it really needs some more use down there to kind of activate that space. Today at lunch, I was down there and I saw a couple of people, homeless people, just sleeping on the benches. I see some people using the picnic tables that are there, but they typically just leave their trash, and they think they're going to have the busboys come and clean up after them. I just think it could use more activity down there. We've talked with the skaters, and they seem to think there's enough space to work in some features into the park. This diagram I have here is a very, very rough scheme of what could be done down there, essentially trying to activate the entire linear space with different skate features. Since it wouldn't be a full-fledged park, it's designated as a spot. They call it a spot, and they work in different features throughout. And I went online to try to figure out if I could find some other skate spot pictures online, and what I have here shows one space that I found that would kind of activate some of the open space. You could work in a little plaza here, and it doesn't take much, but it brings activity, and the users really like it. Here's another one, which is a linear park, where they just worked in a little kind of space here where the people could go up the stairs. I mean, they're street features, but those are the kind of features that the skateboarders really like. Here's another one. This one's in Europe, I believe it was in Denmark, where it was along a path, and they just put a little bit of a ramp along the edge of the path, and it just brings activity to the space. Here's another one, where it's in front of a building, but it's another one where, it's just like at our Doyle Hollis Park, the skaters find the spots and they use it. So in our linear park, you know, it's long, and I agree, it's very narrow, it's 40 feet, but there's some areas in this corner, this is about 2,200 square feet, where you could actually have what they call transition elements, which are like the bowls that you'd find in a big park. This area here is wide enough where you could fit in some spaces, and then all along through the park, in this area, you'd need to protect these cars that are parked here, so you'd have to build some kind of a barrier there. We probably would need to move some of the landscaping around, but what I'd like to see is somebody that really knows skateboard design, look at the park and come up with some ideas that are appealing, as well as what people like to use, and just work with the skateboard community to see whether or not we could do something that's worthwhile on there. And as far as your question about the promenade, there's a lot of vacant space there, and if there's a lot of skating activity here, I mean, there could be a possibility of a skate shop opening up in one of those spaces, so.
Sure, but I just, I want to make sure that they know about this, yeah.
So.
Can I ask who added the graphics here?
So when Pixar was building the park, I had spoken with a couple skating companies that were calling me, they're calling me all the time, and I said, "Well, there's a spot that we potentially put one in there." At the time, Pixar wasn't all that thrilled about it, they were under contract building the park, but ideally, if we could have incorporated this ahead of time, we could have worked with Pixar to try to get something done. But this was done gratuitously, you know, we didn't pay for this. They just said, "Well, these are some of the ideas you could do." Like, this feature right over there, that's actually a skate feature they have in San Francisco at China Bank, I think they call it. So a lot of the people like to go there, to that spot, and they can recreate some of these spots that are around in other areas. And these are more or less prefabricated pieces that could be put in. So that's the idea.
I'd move that resolution, and I'd just like to encourage the other council members to realize we have a one-square-mile town here, and much as we'd like to have these, you know, large, large spaces, it behooves us, especially in view of the economic circumstances the state and the cities in, to do as much as we can with these little infill pieces, because they will bring a real quality here, and it's like a mosaic. You put a piece here and a piece there, so I'd move that resolution.
And I'm a second.
And I'd just like to make the comment that my now 11-year-old thought it was a small space for a skate park as well, but, you know, what we're used to is what we see up at Gilman or in other places where they've really dedicated a large space, and those are phenomenal, clearly. You can do bikes, you can do scooters, you can do the whole thing, but we do need to make do. I would like us to think of this maybe not as resolving this issue, but merely as a contribution towards it, and keep in mind, as we discover other potential spaces, but it could be years, and so doing something in the interim, I think, is the best maybe that we can do at this time. So without exception?
Right.
We will move forward on that, too. Thank you. Item I.
On item I, if you can indulge me on this, lots of times in the consent calendar, the public doesn't really get a chance to see the substance of the work that goes on. This particular item is addressing the completion of the pedestrian and bicycle work that was done around the I-80-PAL interchange, and we received a letter today that really points up how important these consent calendar items are. "Today I walked over for coffee at Pete's and didn't come even close to getting killed, not a small thing. I'm writing with appreciation for the work that Emeryville has done to make pedestrian crossings at PAL and the freeway a more even contest between walker and car. The new lights in Walkway are a major improvement on the ideal of a walkable city, and as I say, considerably improve the odds of walk- say, considerably improve the odds of walking from Watergate to any place east of I-80 and being in one piece afterwards. By comparison, crossing the freeway ramps or frontage road there previously was not a whole lot safer than simply walking across state lands of the freeway itself. That's a little much. Trader Joe's, my bank, and the movie screens at Bay Street are now within reach without getting in my car and without the risk of leaving my wife as a widow. I hope you will pass on my thanks to the responsible folks. Tom DeVries." This is an example of, we've done a lot of work on planning, had a lot of community meetings, got a lot of consultants to come in to help us on this whole quality of life and the bike ped improvement in that experience. And this is one resident who's written about it. I've had many, many other people tell me that the improvement at I-80 and PAL is absolutely remarkable. So thank you, Public Works and Planning.
Are you moving that?
I move that resolution, yeah.
And patience pays off.
Right.
Right.
Thank you. And without exception, then we will be done with the consent calendar. If I may ask the City Council for approval, I would like to move up item 8E, which is the North Hollis Utility Undergrounding Assessment District, as there are people here to speak to that. I realize there may be people here also waiting for other items, but I think it would behoove us to move that up if that's okay. Looks like that's okay.
Mayor West, members of the City Council, this is a topic that we were discussing at the last City Council meeting. Staff is recommending that we move forward with forming, with a process of forming an assessment district to pay for undergrounding of the overhead utilities in the North Hollis area. The City Council didn't approve the resolutions we had before them, but we were requested to bring the item back with more information. So back in 2006, the City Council approved the CIP, a five-year CIP, and one of the projects in there was to investigate undergrounding utilities in the North Hollis area. As it was written up in the project description, we were to pursue, to see whether or not an assessment district would be a way of financing it, because the city didn't have the funds available to do all the undergrounding that we would like to do. In September of 2008, the City Council approved a $31,000 contract with Harris to perform the study. And the study was considering undergrounding in the commercial areas and what we identified as the north zone, the central zone, and the south zone. The south zone's actually an area south of PAL. The north zone has essentially 146 property owners, 60 parcels with 111 condominium units. Central zone had, which was the largest zone, had 21 property owners with 32 parcels, bigger parcels. And the south zone has six property owners with eight parcels. This map gives a little explanation as to how we came up with these zones. The yellow lines, the yellow highlight on the map here indicates areas that have already been undergrounded. A lot of this area west of the railroad was undergrounded with an assessment district, the West Emeryville Assessment District. As well as the area to the south, we did some undergrounding with the Bay Shell Mount Assessment District. Areas to the south on Palace Street, on Hollis Street, as you all know, everything south of Palace Street pretty much is undergrounded. Those were paid primarily by Chiron at the time, and then Pixar helped, and then the Redevelopment Agency actually put in some funds as well. But you can see, we left a little island here of poles that are still up. And then this central zone here is bounded by this yellow area, which is Doyle Street. The Redevelopment Agency did a project on Doyle Street and used agency funds to pay for this undergrounding. And then we've got this undergrounding here on 65th Street, which was primarily paid for by developers. You had the Courtyards Project, which did all of 65th, and this frontage here on Hollis Street. And then the Glass House Project, which did all the undergrounding here on 65th. So as you can see, we've got three distinct areas that we created and we did some study on. This area here to the north, or to the east, excuse me, these are all primarily residential, single-family resident properties in Emeryville. We actually brought this item of undergrounding to the Public Works Committee. And at that time, we were talking about the entire project area, and we had residents there from the north zone. We had property owners from the central zone. Nobody was there from the southern zone. We talked about various, we had a presentation for the committee, and at that time, the residents in the northern zone were not, were in favor of undergrounding, but they weren't too sure about an assessment district. But the property owners from the central zone were in favor of an assessment district. There was a lot of deliberation at the Public Works Committee meeting, and at that time, the committee directed staff to even expand the area and include all the residential properties in this area, which essentially would have undergrounded everything in Emeryville east of the railroad tracks. At that time, we didn't have any budget to move forward with expanding the study. It would have taken a $10,000 contract amendment to do that expanded area, study that. But given the large capital costs to do that project and the large number of residents that were there, or property owners, it would be really difficult to gain 50% support for even moving forward with studying or with forming the district. So the price for that, just for the expanded area, was going to be over $10.5 million. And so at that time, we didn't move forward with expanding the study. So undergrounding is expensive. You know, historically, we've paid about $450 a linear foot to do it in the late '90s, early 2000s. When we did our study, we estimated it at about $650 a linear foot, just to account for some inflation. But we just completed Park Avenue, and we're noticing that our costs have come into more like $925 a linear foot. So we've updated the costs in our study to reflect this. And I'm thinking, it's, a lot of this price increase is due to inflation, but also the environmental requirements have been, you know, were more relaxed when we were digging in the past. And there's a lot more testing that gets done, and the cost for disposal is a lot more than it was earlier on. So that's part of the reason why I think the price is so much higher. The property owners in the commercial area in the central zone have submitted a petition. They want to move forward, they're interested in proceeding with undergrounding. In order to proceed with forming a district, you need to have at least five property owners making up at least 50% of the land area submit a petition. And we've received a petition from seven property owners, making up 48.7% of the area. The city has three parcels in the central zone, making up 5%. So there's an opportunity to move forward now with doing some undergrounding in a very large area of the city. If the city decides that it wants to pursue that, we would have to sign the petition to make it over the 50% a mark. And then we could legally move forward with a process to form an underground district. The petition is for the central zone, and this is pretty much the boundary here. There's 21 property owners. The city owns three. And essentially, the fire station and the Doyle Hollis Park is made up of two separate parcels. And this is the estimated budget, if we were to move forward with an assessment district, about an $8.3 million assessment district. And so the question becomes, what about undergrounding in the northern zone? The northern zone's a big enough project that it can stand as its own assessment district, but we need further study on that to see, if we wanted to go forward with that, we would need to further study to see what assessment methodology would be acceptable to the residents. You know, during our review of the studies that we had, there were some questions as to whether or not that was the right methodology for them. So based on our completed study that we've done to date, it's about a $5.4 million project to underground everything in the northern zone. And the city's share would be about a $400,000 general benefit for that work, if we were to move forward with a separate district. So we met with residents of Oliver Lofts about a week and a half ago, and they're interested in undergrounding there. And they'd like to see the city study the possibility of another separate assessment district in the northern zone. And it could be done in parallel with working on a district in the central zone. The city could host meetings with the northern zone property owners, and we could do some public outreach and try to figure out what size a district would be acceptable within the northern zone. So if we wanted to do that, we're thinking that could be done in parallel. We've done public noticing for both the meetings. The meeting we had last week, we noticed, and the meeting today, we noticed both areas, the northern zone and the central zone. And up till now, we've received about six responses from property owners concerned about the potential assessment district, and we received an email from RUL. So our staff recommendation is, for the central zone, is to proceed with the process to initiate the formation of the central zone assessment district, and to retain the engineer to lead that process and to direct the city manager to sign the petitions on behalf of the city so that we can move forward with the process. And for the north zone, we're thinking that with the same contract we have with Harris, we could further study what it would take to pursue a district in the northern zone. We could perform outreach for the property owners, and we could try to size an assessment district that would be acceptable to the property owners. And then, once we know what it is, we would have the owners circulate a petition to see if there's adequate support. There's financial considerations to consider. At this point, to move forward with that approach, it would cost about $52,000 to do the study, to form the district and to further the study. I believe the portion for doing the central zone district is about $47,000, and that would be refundable if we later actually formed the district. We would need to retain bond counsel and financial advisory to be able to sell the bonds, and the amounts listed here would be only paid if the bonds are actually ever sold. So the impact for the city, if we do this, would be, for the central zone, is about $1.6 million. There is about $454,000 that would be the city's special benefit on the district. There's $700,000 in general benefits that we would have to come up with. And then the post office has work to be done, and we probably would have a hard time getting money from the federal government on this assessment district. So we would have the budget to covering that, even though we would send them the bill and hopefully they would pay. For the northern zone, if we were to proceed with a district eventually on that, if we did the whole thing, it would be about $400,000 in general benefit that we would have to consider. So our recommended resolutions to move forward, these are the same resolutions that we had before you last time, except for the contract's a little bit different, to include the increased study in the amount here is about $5,500 higher. So with that, that's my presentation. If you have any questions?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Any clarifying questions before we hear from the public?
I just have one question. Would it be your intent to, if we got approval on both these projects, to bid them at the same time?
We would.
One package with a breakout?
Ideally, if we could get, if we could get approval of both districts at the same time, you could do the design effort at the same time. The design effort's not a real quick thing. It takes close to a year. So even if we were to get started with the design soon after the formation of the district, then, you know, we could be behind, but not that far behind. I believe it's about an eight-to-12-month process to form the district. During that time, we could be doing the study to see whether or not the north zone is interested. And then if they were, then you've got another eight-or-month process for that northern district. But once they catch up, we could, you know, try to sync up the design.
And just like cable TV companies that have the fiber cable out there, is there any way that we can charge back some of this cost to them? Because they have their, oops, sorry. They have their boxes every place. Do we ever receive any financial benefit from the cable companies for what they do in the city?
What we've done in the past, and like we did on Park Avenue, Comcast paid the city to install their facilities. They paid us $70,000. We constructed an extra fiber conduit in the street on Park Avenue in anticipation of a fiber optics company wanting to come in. Paxio actually has come in and wants to use those facilities, and it's going to cost around $100,000. So we will get money for those in return.
That's my question.
Okay. If there are no other specific questions, let's open it up to the public and hear from people who came tonight to speak on this issue. I don't have any names in front of me, so if you would come forward, that would be great. And can I just see a quick show of hands to see how many people are hoping to speak this evening so that we know? Okay, great. And you will be timed to three minutes.
Mayor West? Mayor West, excuse me, if we could just ask speakers to sign the sign-in sheet over here after you're finished.
Thank you.
I'm Richard Ambro, and I'm a longtime resident and voter at 1254 Sixth Fourth Street. I'm a member of RUL, and I would like more time to study everything about the plans, the implications, and so on. And I think it's a little early to move on this particular measure. I'm also an archaeologist and historian, and I'm concerned about whether any study has been done, prepared, or will be, to identify potential archaeological resources in that area. Across the area between 65th and Ocean, used to have a creek through it, and that suggests a possibility of buried prehistoric resources. Also, that was Butcher Town. There may be buried historic resources as well. And also, in the 1860s, 1870s, that was open space, farms. There were Chinese farmers in that area as well. But I don't know everything because I haven't done a major study. A proper, even though this is only a secret project and not a NIPA project, I think it's proper to have a historic context and a research designed prepared for a big project like that. It's actually a sampling of the history and geology of Emeryville. Thank you.
Thank you. You would remember to sign in after you speak. That would be great. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you for your time. My name is Deborah Underwood. I'm a homeowner at Oliver Lofts. I'm here speaking for Sheila Opperman, another homeowner at Oliver Lofts, as well for Beau Comar, who's a resident and HOA Board President at Liquid Sugar. So our properties would be part of this potential north zone assessment district. And basically, I would just like to express our support for doing the financial feasibility study of the north zone. And I would also second Maurice Kaufman's recommendations regarding the north zone that he presented. With the results of the financial feasibility study, we will be able to go back to the residents of this zone and seek support and feedback on this potential assessment district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, my name's Scott Robinson. I'm a local property owner in Emeryville, commercial property owner, and I have been a real estate commercial broker for 25 years in the city, and I've brought a lot of mid-sized companies and still interface with those companies along Hollis. If someone could pass this out, this was.
Give it to the clerk.
Perfect. That is an email from Andy Allen, who's a property owner, to not be here tonight. Also, John Nemec, who owns quite a large parcel at 65th and Hollis, is ill and also supports Andy Allen's backing in that email you'll read. What I think you'll find in talking, I've been going around talking to owners, I've been talking to tenants along Hollis, I've been talking to, even RUL has sent me emails. What I think you're going to find is that the concerns are the same with the residential community and the business community and the tenants, that no one that I have found is against the underground district. I think they would like to see it slowed down a bit, have some workshops, discussions, possibly blend it with one larger assessment district. I know you've broken it into pieces, but like Kurt just said, maybe there is a way that we can efficiently make it all one to save cost, et cetera. The other concern I have, and I am a commercial property owner myself and have been a tenant, is that I have never in 25 years seen a lease, whether it's single net, triple net, gross lease, that will not pass these costs of assessment directly onto tenants and businesses. I read my own leases. It's right in there. Tax increase over base, gross lease, special assessment, and, you know, any kind of general assessment. So I went down to lunch at Bucci's today. I ran into my tenant, who is Ralph Gutierrez at Gasket Specialty, 62nd and Hollis. Greg Harper's attorney happened to be there. We had a nice chat. Gentlemen, are you aware about the utility district? Greg was very informed. Ralph had no idea about it. I said, I said, "Per my calculations, Ralph, if I pass this on to you, comes down, it's going to be a 13th-month rent for you. How do you feel about that?" Obviously, didn't know anything about it, was concerned because of the economic times, and I think you're going to find the same thing. So one of the things, I sent an email out to all of you a while back, was to look, if we can slow down the process, I think everybody wants the underground district, I think we can look to financing to make it more palatable to both the owners and even if they were to pass it on to the tenants, can lower the monthly impact that will be borne by the tenants so in these hard economic times, they don't stress and go out of business. Some other, you know, concerns my other owners have is, should an empty warehouse or warehouse have the same weighted effect in financing and cost as, say, a high-rise condo? The argument there is, I have one owner, he has a 20,000-foot building, it's vacant, and he says, "Scott, my warehouse really doesn't care if there's a telephone pole there or not," versus the benefit. Lastly, and I'll wrap up, I noticed on your map, all the yellow lines in the past have been paid by developers or redevelopment money or aid. In this particular case, you're asking all the private owners of these parcels to pay for this district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Lefkowitz. I live on 66th Street in Liquid Sugar. I'm former board president the last, well, four years preceding Beau's current term. And I came tonight because I certainly understand the cost implications of this project, but I'm also the person who's called in the last two emergencies with regard to exploding transformers on the power lines in front of our property. And the last one, we had downed live wire for 15 or 20 minutes, and, you know, it happened that no one came by. But, you know, not only were the people who lived there in danger, but so were the public safety workers who came out to respond. And the sense that I've gotten from talking to the utility workers who've come is that the lines on the poles on 66th Street, that they simply aren't safe, and they're not confident long-term in their construction or in their maintenance. And so I've, over the years, we've lived in Liquid Sugar eight years since the beginning, and I've certainly, you know, moved in with the understanding that it was an unsightly thing that we could, you know, that we could live with. But seeing the real danger, and it's not a potential danger, we've already had two failures in the last 12 months, I've really come to very strongly support looking at a district for the north zone. I think it's really important to move on, and we're talking about a series of measured steps as it is. I'm not sure that planning to slow it down makes any sense, and we still have several series of assessments and planning stages to go. So I strongly urge movement on this project. I think we'll find, within Liquid Sugar, well, there's also strong support, and I think it's really incumbent on all of us to realize that it's a life and safety measure at this point and not merely a matter of cost.
Thank you, Steve.
Hello? It's Larry Farb. I own property on Hollis and 67th Street, and we've been property owners for about 20 years. The way I've learned of this event is that late last week, I got a mailing notifying us that there was, that this, excuse me, that this project was in process. And so I'm a property owner, and I'm just finding out about it. I have a number of tenants in my buildings. They don't, I don't think they know anything about it because, like previous speakers said, they will be the beneficiaries of this financially. So I would urge you, you know, to look into notifying more people. We're in the north zone. Why I'm here, I looked down the list once I got to the city website and found the packet, and I saw our properties have multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars next to them, probably in the neighborhood of what the whole city is contributing to the process. So I would urge you to, I encourage you to get more people involved, both tenants and property owners, and get the sentiment before expending so much money and find out that no one's really in favor of it, or at least, you know, the process of how you're going to finance it, and make sure that that makes sense to the people that are going to be using it. And just an aside to the last speaker, I've owned the property for 20 years. I've never seen a PG&E problem that is being described. Thank you.
Hi. Lauren Westreich from Every Dog Has Its Stake here. I'm a little small business on 63rd Street and just wanted to make a quick comment. I think what Scott was saying is perfectly appropriate, that there's nothing inherently wrong with the idea of doing an underground district. It's just that the financial implications can be pretty extreme for somebody in the position that I'm in where I can't pass the cost on to my tenants because I'm the tenant. So, you know, it's not an inconsequential amount of money, and it behooves us to pay attention to that. Thanks.
Good evening. George Martin of the George M. Martin Company. We own like five or six parcels along 67th Street between Hollis and the Marchand Building. And I'm very concerned about this as well because with the number of parcels we have, with the square footage that we own along there, we are our own tenants, we own the property, and the financial burden could be very difficult for us. I mean, these are difficult times and difficult times for the future. This is an industrial area. It is not a residential area, and while it might look really pretty, as Scott had said, I think it was Scott had said, telephone pole in front of our building really doesn't affect us particularly. But I think the process needs to, you know, there's a lot of time that needs to be spent on this process so that we can make sure it's done right, and the financial impact to small business owners like us is not too severe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
Well, hello. First time addressing you here at the podium. I have a few concerns about this. First of all, the process. Whenever the city discusses anything that has to do with anybody's parcels, they should be notified. There were meetings at the Public Works Committee. I think those property owners could have been notified at that time. If we have PG&E lines that are dangerous, I think we should be going after PG&E. I mean, they have an obligation to maintain safe lines in the city. I also wonder whether we want to use general fund money to do this. Maybe after January, we might have some redevelopment money available. And then, I hope you appreciate the transcript I did that hopefully gave you some more information. During the transcript, I noticed that the bond council said they had informal meetings in other cities. So why don't they do that here? Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. Just two things. First, I was here for the other meeting, so I heard this discussed. It may have not been covered as much this meeting, but I think what you're being asked to do is start a process that will lead to a public vote of all the potentially impacted parcel owners. They will get to tell you exactly what they think, and there could be a lot of process in advance of that vote, that you're not really deciding that this project will move forward. You're deciding to spend a little advisory consultant money so that it can go to a vote, and then you will be able to review the results of that vote and decide independent, use that as guidance, but really the final decision will be yours. And so for people who are here this time for the first time and weren't here last, I think that's important because this really isn't deciding the project will occur tonight. Second, this has already been voiced here, but we remain very interested in the city keeping itself vibrant and healthy as a physical infrastructure. And this, we view as an investment in long-term infrastructure. Everyone's been very focused on PG&E's gas lines. They've been all over the city testing them. Today, we had the fourth East Bay mud leak on Hollis in front of our buildings in the last 12 months. It's something we've been working with Public Works and some of the council and Pat O'Keefe to try to get the attention of these people, but there are issues. If you don't keep it current and up to date, it doesn't last forever. So this is just, I think, something where you can at least hear if the public is interested in reinvesting in infrastructure and then make that decision. So thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Please.
I think that one of the possibility of the price, that the budget should reflect what the property owner pays in the assessment stocks. And if there is a lot of assessment, it means that the work to be done is going to be very valuable. If the assessment is low, like an older property, then it doesn't really matter to have a telephone pole or the thing on the ground. So I would think that there should be a scale and a view of the assessment value with each property in which the price is going to be decided instead of being a blanket price for everybody is going to create hardship for some. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Schmitt. It was your last meeting. Good to be back. Congratulations on your new, center for your new position. I'd like to say one thing. There are 21 property owners. Right now, we're being dictated to by seven of those property owners. I wonder how many tenants are involved in this area? Is anybody taking account of the tenants involved in this total area? Because like Scott said, this clause will be passed on the tenants. It won't really be borne by the property owners, but it's going to be passed on to tenants. That's the way your leases are drawing up nowadays. So let's consider everybody, property owners and tenants. Thank you.
All right. Does that conclude our public comment for now? I'll turn to the council.
Okay. So Maurice, can you come back up here? The concerns that I'm hearing have less to do with the public benefit and, you know, investing in building up our infrastructure, more to do with the actual out-of-pocket cost. So can you talk about the ways in which the cost might be amortized over time?
I would like to defer to our consultant from Harris Associates, Dennis Klinkelhofer, who's, this is his expertise, and he can answer that a little bit better.
Maurice, before you leave, I just have one quick question. How deep are we talking about as far as when you underground? How deep do you have to believe?
Generally, they don't go deeper than five feet because then you have to use shoring. But if you have to get underneath a utility, you go a little bit deeper.
Before Dennis talks, I could just answer your question briefly by what was in the feasibility study. Essentially, it's a 25-year amortization period through the bond issue. So that's how they're amortized over time, and it's a low interest rate because it's a tax-exempt bond or interest, tax-exempt interest rate on the bonds.
Thank you, Ellen.
Dennis Klinkelhofer with Harrison Associates. Just a couple of comments, I guess, in response to some of the property owner comments. And as Helen explained, the intent is that if the assessment district were to be formed with the approval of property owners, it would be financed through the sale of tax-exempt bonds. Typically, the amortization periods, depending on the district and the financial markets, 20 to 30 years, so 25 years is a good, you know, estimate. They are tax-free bonds, so they have a lower interest rate. Property owners have the option of prepaying their assessments during the 30-day cash collection period to avoid financing costs, although most property owners elect, just like a home mortgage, to pay it over the life of the bonds. Yeah, the feasibility study really looked at, you know, the big picture, what are some alternatives, both in terms of the type of financing mechanism and assessment district, community facilities district, that could be used to pay for undergrounding of utilities. If the city council elects to move forward and initiate the process of forming the district, our next step then is to do a detailed engineer's report, which very well may result in some changes or modifications to the assessment methodology based on going out and doing a detailed look at each parcel that would be impacted by the district, you know, what its current use is, what benefit will it receive from the undergrounding of utilities. And so, you know, the feasibility study was, you know, 30,000-foot look at what might occur. Doing the actual engineer's report is a detailed review of how that project would impact each parcel. Be happy to answer any of the questions the council has.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from council or comments?
Yeah, can we have Maurice come up, get in the hot spot again? It's good for him. It's good for your character, Maurice. You know, I think there may have been some misinformation that's going out. Can you clearly explain to the council and to the interested people here that this is not, the steps you're taking tonight do not form an assessment district? There's going to be a process if this goes forward. Just briefly indicate the steps that will be taken and how much opportunity there is for public input, public discussion.
I'm going to defer once again to our expert on the process.
Yeah, if I-
Pretty good hands, Maurice.
If I could.
He doesn't stay in a hot seat long.
And we're looking for something brief here.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, if I could draw your attention, and you can add to this, but if I can draw your attention to the scope of work that's attached to the staff report from the Harris firm, on page three, there is a task two called establishment proceedings. So this is now after Harris has done the more detailed work that he just described before on the engineer's report. Then there are a series of steps here that we need to go through in order to notice people what the assessments will be, to provide a meeting for property owners, and if you want to add tenants to it, we can add tenants for them to understand what the assessments are. And then there's a public hearing that follows that. Now, so that's three opportunities where it comes back to council for people to be able to understand the amount of the assessment and how it works. If you would like to add to that, so if you think that one property owner information meeting is not enough, we can add a second property owner information meeting. We can certainly do that. But there is that whole process that occurs after the assessment engineer has a better idea of what the methodology is going to be and the costs on a per parcel basis is going to be.
Patrick, thank you. This is what I'm trying to get across here. This is an initial step. There's a long way between an initial step and the formation of an assessment district. Lots of opportunity to have input, lots of opportunity to get accurate information rather than hyperbole. For anyone to suggest, as has been suggested by certain individuals, that this has come out of nowhere, and it's something that's a rush, rush thing, I'd have to remind everybody that back in 2007, this was part of the capital improvement program. And the reason for that is, this city is an old city. Well, not compared to Rome, but it's an old city for West Coast. So we've got to take a look at this infrastructure. Now, you may not have had problems with live wires falling in front of your business, but we've had other people come forward that have had these kind of problems, just like they had up at Oliver Lofts. So we've got to address this infrastructure. This action tonight is the first step. There will be plenty of time to have input, to bring up these issues, and I certainly appreciate the issues of the ancient history of Emeryville, and I thank, who was that that did that?
Richard.
Richard. I thank Richard for bringing that forward. These are the kinds of things that we'll have an opportunity to take a look at. But I would urge the council to move these resolutions, to take seriously the task we have before us of improving the infrastructure of this city to meet the 21st century. And with that, I would move both resolutions.
And I would second that.
Are there any further council discussion or input? I have a few things to say, but no, not right now. Okay, I'll take the opportunity. I'm in support, actually, of the first resolution, which is moving forward on engaging a contract to study this and to look at all of the- Now, so that's three opportunities where it comes back to council for people to be able to understand the amount of the assessment and how it works. If you would like to add to that, so if you think that one property owner information meeting is not enough, we can add a second property owner information meeting. We can certainly do that. But there's, there is that whole process that occurs after the assessment engineer has a better idea of what the methodology is going to be and the costs on a per parcel basis is going to be.
Patrick, thank you. This is what I'm trying to get across here. This is an initial step. There's a long way between an initial step and the formation of an assessment district. Lots of opportunity to have input, lots of opportunity to get accurate information rather than hyperbole. For, for anyone to suggest, as has been suggested by certain individuals, that this has come out of nowhere and it's something that's a rush, rush thing, I'd have to remind everybody that back in 2007, this was part of the capital improvement program. And the reason for that is this city is an old city. We, well, not compared to Rome, but it's an old city for West Coast. So, we've got to take a look at this infrastructure. Now, you may not have had problems with live wires falling in front of your business, but we've had other people come forward that have had these kind of problems, just like they had up at Oliver Lofts. So, we've got to address this infrastructure. This action tonight is the first step. There will be plenty of time to, to have input, to bring up these issues. And I, and I certainly appreciate the issues of the ancient history of Emeryville. And I, and I thank, who was that that did that?
Richard.
Richard. I thank Richard for bringing that forward. These are the kinds of things that we'll have an opportunity to take a look at. But I would urge the council to move these resolutions, to take seriously the, the task we have before us of improving the infrastructure of this city to meet the 21st century. And with that, I would move both resolutions.
And I would second that.
Is there any further council discussion or input? I have a few things to say, but no, not right now. Okay, I'll take the opportunity. I'm, I'm in support actually of the first resolution, which is moving forward on engaging a contract to study this and to look at all of the, all of the options, I guess, that are, are possible. I'm hesitant to vote for the second one, and I'll tell you why. I'm concerned about the threshold, the 50% threshold that needs to be met and having the city as property owners weighing in to reach that threshold. To me, it seems that it should come from the property owners and we're already, it says, I can't remember, it's 47 or 48%, and it, it behooves, I think, the city to wait and make sure that there's that much support at a minimum, just to get it started. And I think there may be that much support. It's just a matter of, again, involvement, information, actually having those conversations. So, and, and then I would also challenge the city council. We've talked about the process and how even once a vote has been taken, it's up to the city council to decide whether to move forward or not. Well, what would we be comfortable with at that point? If it was 50% plus one, is that good enough to move forward? And if the city actually is part of that 50%, is that good enough to move forward with an assessment district that for some properties is financially difficult? What would, would we be comfortable with 70%? Or is it a super majority, 66%? If, if the council could have some feeling of that now, that could save us a lot of work down the line because I feel like we can get buy-in now, we can get buy-in later. But we might as well be clear with what would be something that we'd be comfortable with in moving forward on this. And I just wanted to put that out there for the council to consider.
Can we hear from Mr. Biddle?
I would just make you aware that much of the contract services for Harris and Associates are somewhat dependent upon the second resolution. So, if you don't do the second resolution and start the formation process, much of the work called for in Harris's Associates wouldn't get started. And, and really, it sounds like you're talking about sort of revising the contract probably to, for have Harris to be involved in some of the same sorts of work that we're going to have them do for the, for the North Zone.
Right, that additional $5,500 that was changed since the last contract.
Yeah, I think we're, there's additional work for their North Zone. It sounds like what you're talking about is doing similar type of activity for the Central Zone.
Yeah, I think that would be a prudent way to move forward.
I call the question. Let's take each resolution separately. Call the question on the first resolution.
Yes. Good. Councilmember Asher.
Yes.
This is the first or the first and the second?
This, just the first. E1.
E1. Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brinkman.
Aye.
And Mayor West.
Aye.
Move the second resolution.
I'll second that.
No.
Councilmember Atkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brinkman.
Aye.
Mayor West.
No. All right. Thank you. That concludes that vote.
Is everybody fine or we need a break or anything? You fine?
Let's keep going.
Fine, let's keep going. All right, so we're going to go back now to administrative item 8A, which is a review of the city council representatives to regional county and state bodies. Karen, let me know when you're ready.
Give a minute for the chamber declare. Let's give you a minute for the chamber to clear.
Okay.
Lot of interest. Yeah. Okay, each year, the city council reviews, reviews the regional boards that various members of the city council and the community represent the city on and makes direct staff on what appointments will be made for the following year, for this year 2012. Attached to the, to the item, there's a list of all the various county, regionals, and state advisory bodies, as well as who is the current council designate and whether or not there are current vacancies. If you remember that, well, there are some vacancies, but in addition to that, it is also up to the council on either affirming or changing the appointment of anyone who is currently representing the city on any of these bodies as well. In addition to the city council representative, representatives, we do have one community member, Jim Golden, who represents, represents the city on the mosquito abatement district. And in a separate agenda item on this council agenda, there's also a request to appoint someone to PAPCA, which is the Paratransit Advisory and Planning Committee. That would be for Joyce Jacobson. But right now, we're just asking you to look at the various city council representatives to the advisory bodies and to direct staff what to bring back for final action, which is usually put just on the consent calendar for the December 20th meeting.
Great, thank you. I see one correction on this list, I believe, which is the East Bay Economic Development Alliance. It says Brinkman, but if I'm not mistaken, it's Atkins who serves on that.
I checked that, but I, I don't have a record that that was made, but...
Oh. Well, I, I think, hang on a second. I, I do go to the executive committee meetings of East Bay Economic Development Alliance, but I think Kurt, you've been on a committee or something?
Oh, no, I've attended one or two of them, so...
Maybe you share that.
But, but the, but the thing that I'm concerned about is I got on that through a mayor's conference appointment. It wasn't something that Emeryville had, had jurisdiction over.
Okay. So, it may be who is nominated for consideration by the mayor's council for that one.
It had nothing to do with me being an Emeryville rep. It was, it might have been a North County position from the mayor's conference.
Who's got the answer?
All right, yeah. Hopefully, East Bay EDA would know, but I don't know.
No, I know, it was a mayor's conference.
We can figure out the mayor's conference appointment later, but you, still tonight, you need to decide who you want to have as representative from this body.
So, East Bay, East Bay EDA has a member from every jurisdiction as well as additional members that are appointed then through the mayor's conference?
No.
No.
They don't have a rep from every jurisdiction.
But we get a rep there?
No.
Oh, we don't.
I'm saying I was the mayor's conference appointment.
So, what are we voting on for that organization here?
Wow. I thought each city was represented, but if that's not correct, then we should probably punt this one over to the next meeting and let us find out more information on that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Mayor West, I have a question on this Emeryville, Oakland, JPA appellate council. We have in there that there's a vacant position on there. As I remember, that we only had four members on that appellate council. That's the way we set it up. We had four and Oakland had three. They didn't link up to that until, that's all right. So, that, so delete that vacant there. There's just four members on that JPA.
And we'll just stick to the four members? We'll, we'll leave Jack out of that one for now? I don't think we've met, at least not in my two years on council.
No.
I haven't met in 12 years.
In 12 years, we haven't met. All right, well, then it's not that significant.
And we don't want to meet, but...
Excellent.
When Cattellus comes forward with their big mixed-use project, then you'll have to meet.
Okay, thank you. We'll be ready.
Could we ask our new member if she has any interest in any of these positions?
I would also like to relinquish one of mine, so I'll put it out there, just so you know. The East Bay Division of the League of California Cities has been a great opportunity for me to meet other representatives from other cities, but in reality, I am not always able to attend. And Ken Bukowski actually would attend often for those dinners, so I would be happy to give up my position there.
Now, why does it say, on our amended one, item 11, page 11 of 12, League of California Cities, it lists two vacancies, member and alternate.
Well, there are two different things for the League of California Cities. One is the annual conference, and we just appoint someone at that time. We designate someone for that conference. And the other is the East Bay Division, as far as I understand it.
I see.
The Division meets monthly, Mayor, is that correct?
Correct.
So, can we approve this with, if Councilmember Asher, you're going to step up and take your suggestion?
Well, there are, there are a couple of them that, looking at my, my work schedule, along with my kind of areas of interest that I'm interested in. So, I think that the Association of Bay Area Governments is one that I'm interested in, the Alameda County Housing Authority, and perhaps the Gilman Playing Fields Joint Powers Authority.
I would be glad to let you have the Gilman.
I knew you would.
And I would be glad to let you have the housing authority.
You got Gilman.
Wow. You could at least be the alternate for ABAG. That would be fine with me.
Okay, okay.
So, in terms, in terms of the housing authority, those are, those are terms that are actually codified at a board of supervisors' meeting, and my term ends in 2013.
Okay.
But I, I will, I will submit a letter of resignation so that Emeryville can submit your name to the board of supervisors.
Thank you, Ruth.
Well, it's eight, you know, it's eight o'clock on a Wednesday in Hayward.
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, and so that, so you have Gilman and the housing authority. What was the other one?
As the alternate for ABAG, is that right?
Yeah.
Alternate for ABAG.
The Gilman playing fields, I think that was one of them.
Yeah, Nora already.
Okay, I would move that we direct staff to come back with those changes.
I'd second it.
Okay, since that was, may I just, hold on, make sure that I have this correct. So, what I have now then is for AC Transit, Emeryville liaison is Davis and Atkins. ABAG is Atkins with Asher, the alternate. ACAP is the city manager. Alameda County Housing Authority, Councilmember Atkins will resign, and then we will put in a request for Asher to take her place. ACTC of the Alameda County Transportation Commission is Atkins with Brinkman as the alternate. The Paratransit Commission will be, will be done at a separate agenda item. Let Abatement Program is Councilmember Atkins as the member with the city manager designated as the alternate. Mosquito Abatement District continues to be served by Jim Golden. The economic, East Bay Economic Development Alliance is going to be held over so we can determine whether or not that is a appointment done directly by the mayor's conference. The JPA appellate council, there's only four members, not a vacancy, so that will remain the same. The Gilman Playing Fields Joint Powers Authority will be represented by Councilmember Asher. The East Bay Division, League of California Cities, will still be represented by Mayor West.
Unless somebody else is interested.
And the alternate is vacant. And the League of California Cities, what's there now are the delegates from the last conference, but not the ongoing representatives.
So, we could take those off because I think we just appoint them for the next one. And you missed the Alameda County Waste Management Authority, which I would still...
Sorry about that.
...be honored to serve on.
And that is, yes, sorry, Mayor West as member and Councilmember Atkins as the alternate.
Correct? That sounds right to me.
Okay. And I hope you received on the dais, the updated roster that includes the additional information that was requested. It includes the stipends, if any, that are provided to members.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is similar but different. It is item 8C, which is the review of city council representatives to our local boards, commissions, and committees for appointments for next year. As I recall, and I'll just frame this discussion, we, we had a discussion last year when we had this process about the idea of not always keeping the same positions on the same committees and having maybe a two-year flexible voluntary rotation of sorts. And Kurt and I were both in favor of that. So, that leaves this wide open, but I will turn to the council members to...
I would say, Jack, is there anything that you'd like to have?
Are we talking about the advisory bodies at this point or?
It's all of them. So, it's the city council subcommittees, the advisory bodies, which include members of the community, and then also the ad hoc advisory bodies.
I'm very interested in the technology committee.
I could step off that.
Okay. Thank you, Kurt. And also would be happy to serve on Public Works or Transportation or not.
I'm, I have served on the Public Works Committee, which I have greatly enjoyed and appreciated, but I am also interested in Transportation Committee and would be happy to switch if someone was...
I, I think I'm on the Transportation. I would love to be on the, switch with the, on that.
On Public Works?
So, now, what are you guys going to do?
Well, we're still figuring that out.
So, West will go to Transportation and Brinkman will go to Public Works.
That doesn't mean that Asher got either of those.
Huh?
No.
I'm on Technology.
Sure.
You got Technology.
Okay.
So, advisory bodies?
Sure, let's move on to advisory bodies.
Bike ped.
You want that? They'll be delighted to see you there.
Will they be? Well, that's good news.
That's great.
I'd also be interested in finance, housing, or Marina.
Well, I'd like to go off the housing committee. So, Jack, why don't you go on that?
Okay. Thank you.
And...
I'm on Marina, and I don't think we've ever had a meeting, unless I'm mistaken.
Once a year, yeah, in January.
It's coming up. Your, your meeting is coming up.
So, you're going to be on that, Jack?
No, I'm, I'm going to stay on the Marina. I'm going to stay on the Marina till the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And Kurt, you know, we flipped a coin two years ago for the Finance Committee and I would, well, I would be willing to offer, I mean, I, again, I think it's a very important committee, but I'd be willing to offer it to either one of you if that... What do you think, Kurt?
Thank you for your time, and it's your choice.
I think I'd like to be on the Finance Committee.
Yeah, all right.
I, I'd be interested in the ECDC. I see there's a vacant, vacancy there.
Oh, great.
That'd be great.
That'd be Jennifer. Oh, she's on there.
It would be in addition to Jennifer.
Asher.
No, it was Nora.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the ECDC.
Nora, you said ECDC.
ECDC.
And there's a, I don't know when this meeting, committee meets, but the I-80 pedestrian bike crossing has a vacancy, so I'd be interested in that.
Great. We, we, you know, almost abandoned, disbanded that committee, but it won't meet often, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, so maybe it'll meet as needed or sporadically or something.
Maybe once the project is...
We really need to have, back me up on this, Steve, another council member on the Fire Safety Task Force.
I would like to be on that one.
Good.
We have almost all the vacancy, no, Community Preservation has a vacancy.
How, how often do they meet, Nora?
Quarterly.
Okay, I'll be on that one, too.
Okay, Jack on Community Preservation.
And then the ramp?
Right, that's our last, brand-new... Right, that's our last, brand-new committee, the Caltrans Ramp Ad hoc Advisory Committee. It was just, it was just birthed officially last meeting.
I, Nora and me, you want?
Oh, good, 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 good.
Those are smiles, I figured you...
Good, 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 good. Okay, we got 'em all filled in, let's go with what we have.
There was just one thing that I wanted to ask as a result of Councilmember West and I talking about this. Are we missing the Park Avenue Committee from this page?
We have a page later that has it, but it's not on this list.
There are no council members on that committee.
Yes. Ah, that's why.
All right, so do you wanna recap?
Okay, so my recap for the Subcommittee's are Davis and Asher, Brinkman and Davis, Davis and Brink, sorry. Community Preservation Committee is Davis and Asher. Public Safety is Brinkman and Davis. Public Works is Davis and Brinkman. Technology is Davis and Asher. Transportation is Davis and West. Bike Ped is Atkin and Asher. ECDC Advisory is West and Davis. Commission on Aging is Davis and Brinkman. Finance Advisory is Davis and Asher. Housing is Atkin and Asher. Marina is Davis and Brinkman. Public Art is Davis and Brinkman. Caltrans Ad, Ad hoc, the Ramp is Davis and Brinkman. Fire Service Task Force is Davis and Brinkman.
I see a pattern here.
I-80 Bike Ped Cross, Bike Ped Crossing Committee is West and Atkin, and Zoning Update is Brinkman and Davis. And do I have a motion?
Good job!
Motion and a second?
All right.
Was there a motion and a second on that?
A motion and a second? Who would move that?
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And without exception, we will actually see that again next meeting.
Yes, we usually put that on the consent calendar, but, you know, if there was a mistake or someone changes their mind, of course, it can always be pulled.
Great, thank you. The next item is the review of community member applicants to the various boards, commissions, and committees to make appointments for the next year. And I had asked the staff, although when I moved seats, I don't know what happened to mine, to put together a list so that it was easier to kind of make sure we had all the names.
You wanna look over my, we'll share.
Sure, I'll look over it, I know I had one. I don't know where I stuck it in here. So, I will entertain, and I don't know if there's any public comment or anyone who would, thank you, who would like to speak on any of these items. Would you like to come forward? Thank you. Thanks for sitting through our meeting.
Hi, so my name is Ra Adcock, and I applied for the Housing Committee. I'm new to the area, I have two young children, one at Anna Yates and one on the way. And we picked Emeryville on purpose to move because of this delicious combination of small town and big city, and I wanna be involved. I have a background in nonprofits, community development, and economic development, marketing, and public relations. So I put in my application just yesterday, and I'd love to go tomorrow if I get on it.
That's right, the meeting is tomorrow, okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? All right, then, let's have at it. Shall we take them one at a time? We have the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Subcommittee, and we have three folks who have submitted applications, and I believe we have more than that in terms of vacancies, am I correct?
That's my understanding.
Right, so I would move Swante Rodogard, Betsy, and David Kritzberg.
Second.
Yep.
All right, without exception, we will make those appointments. Thank you for offering your time.
I'm sorry, Mayor, hang on a sec, we need to catch up to you.
No problem.
Mayor West?
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm looking at the roster here.
Yes.
It looks like there are, unless I'm, never mind. Didn't look at the back.
On the backside, yeah.
Didn't look at the back.
Yeah, there are more.
Okay, can we move ahead now?
You ready?
No.
Not quite.
Are we assuming that all of the current members who've asked to be reappointed are also being reappointed by these motions?
Do you mean for the BPAC Committee?
Yeah, for any committee.
I know that, at least, we received an email that the BPAC Committee was notified that if they were interested or not, and that's how we ended up with some vacancies. I would like to clarify that with the other committees.
But all the rest of the committee members who are not listed as vacant have indicated they'd like to be reappointed.
For that committee, that's what I understand. I'm not sure if that's true of all committees.
Right, but your motion you just passed appointed three new people, but you didn't explicitly reappoint the existing members.
Includes, includes reappointing.
I think that was implicit, but we can make that explicit if we need to.
Yeah, we do, too, yeah.
We just use these pages?
So, I, I move the current members who want, wish to be reappointed, be reappointed to the BPAC.
Second, second. Great, and without exception, thank you for that clarification. Are you ready for us to move on?
Go ahead.
Okay. Sadly, there were no applicants for the Child Development Center Advisory Committee, which we have vacancies.
However, there is, Mary Ann Doan should be in here as the Child Care Director. It says vacant.
Oh, good.
That should be written in there.
Thank you for noticing that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that is actually for a, a, someone who is a childcare professional, not, not the...
Oh, not the, not the director.
Yes, not the director.
She's the secretary up above, I guess. Okay. Next, the Finance Advisory Committee, then, we would reappoint, but I, those terms actually say that they go through 2013, so I'm not sure that we knew, need to reappoint anyone for that.
Yeah, I had a question about which ones.
This is the Finance Advisory Committee?
Uh, yes.
And my question was about staggering those terms, but I think we had determined it was a two-year term for members, but somehow they all ended up on the same year. If, if we wanted to be like our other committees, it would make sense not to have everyone, uh, terms end at the same time.
It was, you're talking about Finance, right?
I am, although there was another one like that.
Yeah, there's another one with the same problem, I'm trying to find it. Park Avenue's like that, too.
So that's entirely up to the councils to whether or not you wanna stagger them or just leave them as is. If you wanna stagger them, then you need to think about, you know, maybe adding a year to certain terms, or... Or you could deal with that when the existing terms come up in 2013, and just appoint people.
That would be fine.
Public Art is the same way.
Right, Public Art, also it does not have staggered terms, no.
I had a question about the Bike Ped Advisory Committee. That, were you appointing, in addition to the current members, all of the applicants? Because there are vacancies on that committee. There's two vacancies on Bike Ped in addition to the reappointments.
They will stay vacant.
Okay, that was my question.
Well, so what I see is that there are two resident vacancies, and there is one works-in-Emeryville vacancy and one bicycle organization vacancy. And I'm not sure if these three are all residents, as I recall, or if one of them qualifies to either working in Emeryville or a bicycle organization.
They're all three residents, but I believe David Kritzberg is also employed in, in Emeryville. I'd have to double-check that.
I'm looking at his, uh, thing right now.
What do you see?
Let's see.
Any of these can always be held over, if you have some questions, then we can...
Well, so I think our intent is we would like to appoint all three, but we would like to clarify who might qualify for either the works-in-Emeryville or the bicycle organizations.
David's applying as a resident.
So could we ask staff to look into that, inquire, and get back to us for the next meeting?
He works in Oakland.
Oh, okay.
All right, let's move along.
All right, so we, if we can come back to, I'm sorry, back to the Finance Committee. So the final decision there was that we don't need to do any appointments, and we'll discuss the issue of staggering when these terms expire.
Right. Yes. The Commission on Aging has no vacancies on my list, and so we don't have to do anything there. The Finance Advisory Committee, we've decided to continue. The Housing, oh, that's different, we don't need to worry about the Housing Advisory, but the Housing Committee is next, and we have three applicants for the Housing Committee. And what I would like to ask staff, or the staff support, is for the three whose terms end, was there any indication of whether they wanted to be reappointed?
Yes, they want to be reappointed.
Okay.
Anyone who's listed here, for, anyone here that's listed as a term ending, that the name is listed, requested reappointment.
Okay, with the highlight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So then we have one vacancy, someone whose term ends next, oh, in...
I would move Ra Adcock, who was certainly interested enough to come tonight, and she's a new member of the community.
I second that.
Sounds good.
Without exception? Great, thank you.
Yay, Ra!
Congratulations.
See what happens when you just show up?
That's the secret.
I wanna see you tomorrow night.
Okay, then, moving on to the Marina Committee. We have Eric Raff, who recently applied to be on that committee. And I'm just checking, I'm trying to find the page, but there are vacancies on that committee?
One resident.
Resident and a business rep.
Okay, so, is there a second for that?
Second.
And any exception? Nope, it looks like that is another...
Hey, hey, do you have that one?
You guys need a chairperson.
The Planning Commission, we are not considering now, that will be in the spring. And next is the Public Art Committee. Who can help me out with how many vacancies we have on that?
There are no vacancies.
There are no vacancies on the Public Art Committee, and we have two people who have applied to be on that committee. What is the will of council?
Well, I, I have a preference that not everybody's term end at the same time. I, I'd like the idea of staggering terms here.
This, this is an opportunity here where you have all these terms ending at the same time. If the council wants to, you know, reappoint some of them and stagger the terms, you can do that here. We would also have to, you know, have to make some revisions to the, where it talks about terms of members, because I would assume you would either appoint some of them for, or you could just do a one-year, as opposed to three years, that might be a little bit too long. Just do some for one year and the others for two years. That's if the desire is to have staggered.
What's the, what's the pleasure of the council?
Could we expand the board by two?
Sure. Sure, sure. Sure, board.
We'd like to do that.
Kurt, that, that would be my preference. I, I think that would be good to have new blood, and, and that is the kind of a committee where if you add two more to that, to have 11, it's, you still have a group that can have a lively discussion and...
And we have a lot of people that have problems making all the meetings, so I don't think that would really hurt.
So, is that, you know, Kurt, are you...
I'm making that as a motion.
Proposing that we add two, and Mariana and Samantha?
Yes.
Okay, I'd second that.
Could we indicate then that the, the two new members have terms that end in 2013, two years from now? And that we choose two others here, or, or three others, that would end in 2013, and then the others would end in 2012, just so that we don't end up with this configuration again where the entire committee is...
How about odd numbers in one and even, even numbers do the other?
Great, so if you're an odd number on this list, at this moment, you would be 2013, and if you're an even number, you would be 2012. And then we'll split our two new ones. Is that, would that be fine?
That's good, that's good, move approval of that. Moving along, so...
Do you wanna speak to that, Sharon?
Sharon, you're an odd, you're listed on an odd number ranking here.
To be expected. No, I just don't, I, I didn't have a chance to look at the, at the packet, so I don't, I was just wondering who, we have a meeting this week, and it'd be nice to know, you know, to be able to tell people then what their terms are, so...
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I could read that out, or we could make sure that for your meeting, there is a list that's provided.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We'll do that, we'll give you a list.
So do you wanna tell us which of the two new applicants you want to go to 2013?
Both of them, right?
No, actually, since we did the odd-even split, let's say Mariana would go until 2013, and Samantha would be 2012.
Very good.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. And moving on to the Ad hoc Committees, it looks like we have reappointments until we get to the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee.
Well, but on the Caltrans Advisory, Albert Repola's name is spelled along, it's R-E-P-O-L-A, and we have a vac, it's vacant there, but wasn't Liz Altieri on that commi, commi, committee?
Liz attended one meeting, and I think Trudy, I can't remember her last name, was there as well.
Jim, what do you say?
Sharon's got a little mistake to make.
Please.
It's not a mistake, but I, I just, I'm sorry, I've, I've been out of town and a little distracted. But I know that with our committee, we usually suggest that somebody come to one of the meetings to see what it's like, and, and neither one of these folks, I mean, have been to a meeting, just to know what it is. I mean, some people have a, you know, perhaps preconceived notion of what happens at the meetings, and there's a lot more admin, I mean, and that sort of process that goes on. So, I was just, I just wanted to make that comment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think that's a really important comment, and I think it, the problem is the timing, that suddenly this sneaks up on us, and with the noticing, you know, that needs to be said in September so that people have an opportunity, I think, to attend the meetings before this meeting in December, but, you know, I don't know what to say. Any other comments on that? Are you still comfortable?
Well, on this Caltrans Ramp Committee, would somebody contact Liz Altieri? I'm pretty sure she was in on the original formation of that. So, if we could just contact her, and if she wants to go on, to remain on there, we'd continue it.
Okay.
One of the other things for this committee is that I assume that afterwards, that the committee will vote on when their regular meeting and chair is, but at the time that this body was, was created by the council, there wasn't a set number of members of the public, so I, it was an arbitrary number of five. It could be less than five, it could be more than five, but I just wanted to point that out to the council, that that was just a number.
Well, we'll let them come back with their recommendation, how about that?
Great, that sounds great. We do have, we have a business representative positioned vacant on the Fire Service Task Force, but no applicants at this time. And I'm gonna move straight to the Park Avenue District Advisory Committee. We have had three folks who have applied for this committee, and the one vacancy is a business position, rather than a resident position.
Mayor West?
Yes.
I believe there's a fourth applicant, also Lee Marymore. We...
Could you say that name one more time?
Lee, L-E-I-G-H, Marymore, M-A-R-Y-M-O-R, of Lunt Marymore, the plumbing company on 45th Street. We, I think we have an application from him as well. This vacancy is very recent, it just happened, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and we actually advertised it, but we made the closing date December 30th.
Oh.
So, there may still be people out there who might wanna apply, who didn't realize the appointments were gonna happen tonight.
Perhaps we should hold that item over, but consider those that are, I know that there's issue on file, consider everyone active until we, we, if we receive more...
Right, all right.
Applicants, that'd be fun.
Yeah. Yeah, we were... If this is... If it's okay with you, we were planning to bring this back in January for you to make the appointment.
That's good.
Okay.
I did not get a copy of Lee Marymore, I don't believe, unless it was in today's packet. Did you guys get that?
It was literally just given to me till today, which is why the star is on your list, that we were going to request that you hold this over till January.
Oh, thank you.
One hand didn't realize that that vacancy notice had gone out for the 31st as opposed to the others that were due before this meeting, so we thought it was just prudent to hold that one over.
Thank you for pointing out the asterisk that I missed. So then, if we're holding that over, if that's fine with everyone, the Zoning Update Steering Committee. My only question on this is that one of the members who was a resident and still is, Vanessa Coomerly, is now also on the Planning Commission, and whoever, I guess, Councilmember Brinkman and Davis who serve on this, does that mean we have four Planning Commissioners on this, zoning?
We have three official representatives from the Planning Commission. We have a fourth person who is a resident who happens to be on the Planning Commission. All the meetings of the Zoning Update Steering Committee are noticed as meetings of the Planning Commission and the City Council, just as all committees are, in case a quorum shows up, but no official Planning Commission actions can be taken. So... And it's been that way for quite a while, actually. I'd like to point out also that the terms of the Zoning Update Steering Committee are indefinite, so you're not making reappointments tonight. We do, however, have one vacancy for a business representative, and we don't have any applicants.
We need those business folks involved. Thanks, Bob, for taking notes. All right, I think that concludes for now all of the committee applicants. Thank you, council. We'll move to item 8D, which is a consideration of the 2012 calendar of city holidays and city council regular meetings. I know last year I had made a special request, and I do not have that request this year in terms of July or August, so I am just leaving that up to the council.
If I could ask staff, Mr. O'Keefe, what works best for the staff? You know, it's the beginning of our fiscal year. Is it better to have the holiday in August or July in terms of the operation of the city?
Well, I can't think of any difference between the two of them. I mean, we... We did it for years as July, and we were just fine, so...
I don't care one way or the other. Anybody care?
Seeing where it is in 2012, I do have... I do have a preference for the third, because then there's a couple of days... Contiguous days off, so that would be good.
I would agree with that, just because the holiday happens to land on Wednesday that...
Right.
Next year.
Right. And then I want to thank...
So what does that mean?
Cancel in August. Cancel in July.
Cancel in July. We're all agreed on that? Okay.
Yeah, and then in terms of September's conflict, I want to thank Karen for taking a look, and that is, the September 18th is a conflict for me, where I wouldn't be able to attend.
But then, Ruth, what about the...
The October 2nd.
By following that, the other one is...
Yeah, the October... The October 2nd meeting is not a conflict for me.
So we're okay with October 2nd?
Yeah, and I'm quite... Depending on your pleasure, I'm quite happy to have a special meeting either on the 11th or the 25th.
When we considered this last year, and we ended up canceling one of the meetings in April, it was hard, as I recall, for staff to move a meeting earlier or later, or to have, you know, back-to-back.
Although there's what? Almost a year's notice here, so...
The agenda preparation overlaps between the two meetings, that's the problem. It's not a matter of getting ready now for it, it's...
It's that it's not... It's not that practical.
Yeah, it's hard for us, because we end up trying to prepare two different agendas at the same time. We just don't have the horsepower to do it, so it's better for us if you just cancel it.
And that's what we did last year in April, and we canceled one of our meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what's the pleasure of the rest of council?
Well, I don't have any objection to that, because if anything serious comes up, we can always call a special meeting.
Correct.
Right.
So I think that would work well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's the...
The September 18th?
18th, thank you.
All right. Without exception, everyone... Well, that'll come back also for next meetings.
Actually, this does not come back, so we need approval.
Okay. Is there any objection?
Was there a motion in a second?
Do I have a motion?
I still moved.
I'll second it.
Any objections? Nope, then that passes, thank you. With that, my agenda has come to an end. Is that correct, or am I missing something? I'm sorry. Oh, yes, the reports, thank you. I didn't used to have that. So department heads.
You're doing great.
Thank you. No? And council members?
Oh, no, I asked my question before, if that's okay.
Any reports on meetings attended? All right. With that, I adjourn our meeting.
Do we now need to announce the closed session?
Oh, yeah, we have to go to the closed session.
And I open our closed session meeting. Which will take place immediately.
Very well done.
Very nice to see you.